My name is Josh Lorenti, he/him. I have the privilege of co-chairing this last phase of the commission’s work alongside fellow Commissioner and Co-Chair Dwayne Judd. Before I hand things over to our moderator to get us started, I just want to thank everyone for taking time on their Sunday to be here today. This is a truly historic moment for all of our communities to improve representation at City Hall, and this districting process does not happen without all of you, so thank you for making time to be here today. I will hand it over to our moderator to get us started.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon, everyone. It’s good to see you here. My name is Jamie, and I’ll be your moderator today. Before we begin our program, there’s just a few things that’s important for you to know. First, this session is being recorded and will be available online afterwards, so if you miss something important, you can access it at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. Also, we have American Sign Language and Spanish Interpretation available today, so if you would like to access those services—I saw some hands in the back for—
Just say “hello.”
Thank you very much. You can always go to the front table to find out how to connect with those services. You can also go to that table to sign up to testify if you would like to provide some public comment today, which is—I know what the commissioners are hoping to hear from—you today. But if you do—if you choose not to testify at today’s session, there are other ways that you can provide comments, so I’m going to go over a few of those. First, you can submit your public comment by emailing the commission, and that’s You can call 311 and give verbal testimony over the phone, and you can do that in multiple languages. There are public comment cards available here if you’d like to provide some written comment and just jot a few thoughts down before you leave. Those comment cards are available at the table. There’s also a survey that’s online that you can fill out, and that is at portland.gov/transition/districtcommission. And finally, if you really want to, you can write us a letter and send it in the mail. You can send it to the Office of Management and Finance, care of the Independent District Commission, at 1120 Southwest Fifth Avenue, 97204. However you choose to participate and provide your comment, please do so before the period closes on Saturday, July 22nd. So now I’m going to wrap up this intro by just going over the agenda really quick and handing it over to our commissioners. So for our time together today, the independent district commissioners are going to provide an educational presentation, usually runs about 20, 30 minutes—it’s a lot of great information. We will then open it up for public testimony, and once that concludes, we’ll have some concluding, closing remarks from the commission. If there is time available today, the commissioners may be available to answer questions. We’ll just see how the time goes. If you do pose questions during your testimony, we’ll make note of them, and if there’s time at the end, we’ll start with those first. Okay, that’s all that I have to share with you right now, so I’m going to hand it over to Commissioners Lorenti and Judd.
Good afternoon, everyone. Again, welcome, and we’d like to upfront thank Youth PDX for hosting us here today. Thank you all for joining the ninth in the series of community engagements for Independent District Commission and the voting plans. As I said, we’re going to walk you through a brief educational presentation. Currently, there are five city councilors elected by voters across the entire city, but in November 2022, voters adopted revisions to the city charter requiring four voting districts. Starting with the November 2024 election, each district will elect three councilors, thus increasing city council from five at-large members to 12 district representatives. Voter-approved city charter amendments task the development of an independent district commission to prepare and adopt voting districts. Primarily, this work involves engaging with the community and consulting with experts to design voting districts. This summer’s approved voting districts will remain in place until the next city charter review in 2030. On the independent commission, there are 13 voting members as well as alternates. All of us participated in a city-wide application process. We were vetted by city staff, appointed by the mayor, and confirmed by city council in January 2023. Per the title, the Independent District Commission is an independent community body authorized to create district voting plans on behalf of and accountable to Portland’s communities. A supermajority vote of nine out of 13 commissioners is required to approve the final voting district plan. If after two votes, the district commission is unable to reach a supermajority, plans will be referred to city council for its consideration and adoption. From February to March of this year, district commission foundational work was completed, and a criteria was reviewed during public hearings. There was a provision allowing the district commission to adopt additional criteria, but following two months of public feedback and at a public hearing in April, the district commission voted not to add any additional criteria. At the end of June, draft district plans were made available to the community for review and commentary. In January, we are required to hold—sorry, in July, not January, thinking ahead—in July, we are required to hold eight public hearings, two in each proposed district, before we were able to vote for a district plan. Actually, in fact, we held nine. This is our ninth. We held a Zoom hearing just to capture as much public feedback as we possibly could this past week. Today is, as I said, is the last of the nine series. Per voter requirements, we cannot vote on a final district plan before August 15th or 30 days after the last public hearing on July 16th. While we’ve received public comments to extend the timeline, per voter requirements, the district commission must adopt a plan by no later than September 1st of this year. Beyond being guided by voter-approved requirements, the district commission is also guided by federal and state laws, including the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment as well as the 1965 Voting Rights Act. Under the Fourteenth Amendment, there is a notion of one person, one vote, which requires that voting districts must be of substantially equal population. Under the Voting Rights Act of 1965, district creation cannot discriminate on the basis of race, color, or membership in a protected language minority group. Additionally, it prohibits districting for the purpose of or resulting in racial discrimination. Because population shifts over time, district boundaries must be redrawn in accordance to the U.S. Decennial Census taken every 10 years. While we receive commentary and requests to consider future population shifts, we are legally bound to stick to the 2020 census data and allow 2030 data to inform future Portland’s voter-approved district requirements are rooted in federal court precedent. As much as practicable, districts must, one, be contiguous and compact; two, utilize existing geographic and/or political boundaries; three, be connected by transportation links; four, be of equal population; five, not be drawn to favor a political party, incumbent elected official, or either entity, or dilute the voting strength of any language or ethnic minority group; lastly, they must not divide communities of common interest. Communities of common interest has been defined by national precedent as groups sharing policy concerns and benefiting from alignment. Separating communities of common interest have shown to result in decreased ability to advocate and effectuate community priorities. Please recall that the Independent District Commission decided not to amend these requirements. In determining district—draft district boundaries, the district commission used various data sets to satisfy stated requirements. Examples of those data sets are presented on screen. Use of specific data sets were actually requirements. For example, the Fourteenth Amendment and Voting Rights Act required the use of 2020 Decennial Census as well as American Community Annual Survey data, which provided additional demographic and socioeconomic data. Additionally, some data sets were used to define multiple requirements. As an example, school district boundaries could be used as proxies for political boundaries as well as boundaries of common interest as they reflect an aggregation of shared concerns. The district commission relied on consultants to support defining, aggregating, and analyzing the data. These subject matter experts provided us with guidance in overlaying socioeconomic, voter aids, public transportation, homeownership, renter, and public service data. But defining communities of common interest requires community input, community feedback, community validation. This is the crux of our work. It is listening to you and engaging you that is most important. What common concerns do you have with your neighboring community? How far out do those common concerns radiate? Portlanders have engaged with the district commission in a variety of ways to inform the creation of these draft maps. You are the author of these maps. We are attempting to draw them based on your input. On the screen, you see engagement numbers as of May 30th. Throughout June and now into July, we’ve had hundreds of additional public comments with over 200 draft maps submitted by community members. Commissioners have attended community-led districting events, held individual meetings with community leaders, and spent many hours reflecting on your contributions. Throughout the process, the district commission has centered on voices that have been historically disenfranchised in city decision-making. Commissioner Lorenti will now walk you through the results of those efforts via an overview of draft maps.
Thank you, Co-Chair Judd, for that very informative recap. So now, let’s pivot to the draft district plan and discussion of the draft maps themselves. So as you noted on our timeline, on June 1st, the district commission released three maps—three draft maps, excuse me—for your consideration outlining possible boundaries for the new districts. Each of these maps, named Alder, Cedar, and Maple, adhere to the district criteria that voters approved last November and are directly informed by the community input that we’ve received to date. And now, the names of these maps, I just want to note, are just labels to help facilitate discussion about the maps and to distinguish some of the differences between them. So I’m going to begin by describing what these three draft maps share in common, then I will identify the areas where these maps differ, and then we’ll look at each of these maps individually to get to the underlying rationale behind some of these different trade-offs and considerations. So first, beginning with what these three maps have in common. First, all three of these maps uplift representation in East Portland by connecting communities east of I-205 in a single district. And drawing this green East Portland district in this way also connects the four non-Portland public school districts together in a single district, so that is Park Rose, David Douglas, Reynolds, and Centennial. All three of these maps use the same combination of 82nd Avenue and I-205 in order to preserve the interests of the Jade District as well as the Lentz Neighborhood. Next, if you look at the North Portland District shown in yellow, all three of these maps have all the North Portland neighborhoods connected in a single district with the exception of those that are included in the Park Rose School District. Next, both the north and south sides of Columbia Boulevard are also connected within this yellow North Portland District. The area of Historic Albina is preserved in a single district, and this is out of consideration for the history of displacement and harm to our Black communities in that part of the city, as well as the work being done to restore Historic Albina. Lastly, all three of these maps connect communities west of the Willamette into a single district, and that will segue us to the areas where these maps will differ and where these maps reflect different alternative choices and trade-offs in order to satisfy the district criteria. So the first area where these maps will differ is that all three maps have a west-side district that includes a portion of the east side in order to achieve the equal population criteria. So per the 2020 census, which we are using for population data, the west side of the Willamette is about 20,000 Portlanders short of meeting the equal population criteria. So the Alder map crosses the river in Lower Southeast to connect the communities of Selwood, Eastmoreland, Westmoreland, and Reed to communities on the west side of the Willamette. The Cedar map crosses along the inner east side, and it includes the Central East Side Industrial Council District as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood Neighborhoods, and this does put the neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford Abernathy in two districts. The Maple map crosses in the Central East Side from about I-84 to Powell, and it includes the neighborhoods of Buckman, Kearns, and part of Hosford Abernathy with the west-side district. The second area of difference you’ll notice across these three maps is how to define the boundary between this North Portland District in yellow and the Teal District representing the southeast-central part of the city. So the Alder map uses neighborhood association boundaries along Sandy Boulevard to define that border. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard from about 37th to 82nd, using that as a transit corridor, and the Maple map uses a combination of both neighborhood association boundaries as well as Sandy Boulevard to define that boundary between North Portland in yellow and the southeast-central area in Teal. So now, we’re going to look at each of these maps individually, beginning first with the Alder map. So the Alder map is designed to prioritize existing neighborhood association boundaries. On the Alder map, the west district includes the east-side communities of Selwood, Eastmoreland, Westmoreland, and Reed due to the demographic and socioeconomic similarities between some of these communities. The Alder map uses neighborhood association boundaries along Sandy Boulevard to define the bottom boundary of that North Portland District like I mentioned. The Alder map also divides the central city among three districts using the Willamette River and I-84 as boundaries in order to promote engagement with central city issues and economic opportunities, and also to distribute significant assets and institutions among multiple districts. Next, looking at the Cedar map. The Cedar map is designed to prioritize transit corridors that bring communities together. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard, 82nd Avenue, as well as our MAX and bus lines because most Portlanders intuitively know these corridors, and also to prioritize the role of accessible transit in bringing communities together. The Cedar map includes the Central East Side Industrial Council District as well as the Brooklyn and Selwood Neighborhoods with the west because they share eight bridge connections across the Willamette and maintain bus and MAX connections on that eastern border. And as I mentioned, this does put the east-side neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and Hosford Abernathy in two districts. The Cedar map uses Sandy Boulevard from about 37th to 82nd to define the north district’s bottom border, and this would put the neighborhoods of Hollywood, Rose City Park, and Roseway in two districts. Next, looking at the Maple map. The Maple map prioritizes keeping the central city together as defined by the City of Portland’s 2035 Comprehensive Plan. So on the Maple map, the central city includes the most densely populated and urbanized neighborhoods where residential and commercial uses are tightly interwoven. On the Maple map, the neighborhoods of Kearns, Buckman, and part of Hosford Abernathy are included with the west-side district in order to, one, keep the central city together, but also to connect the renter-heavy neighborhoods on the east side—thinking of Buckman and Kearns—with renter-heavy neighborhoods on the west side, for example Goose Hollow and Old Town. And the Maple map uses both Sandy Boulevard and surrounding neighborhood association boundaries to define the border between North Portland and the southeast-central part of our city. So on the Maple map, the Hollywood neighborhood is in the North Portland District, Rose City Park is in the southeast-central district, and Roseway is split along Sandy Boulevard. Questions for the community. So the Independent District Commission has been committed to ensuring that the final district plan is reflective of the priorities of Portlanders from all backgrounds with a specific focus on creating an equitable and inclusive process. Now that three draft maps have been released for public input, the commission is committed to engaging even more Portlanders to hear additional feedback, opinions, questions, concerns, and ideas. The feedback we receive will be integral to informing the final district plan in August, and this is a collective opportunity for all of us to fundamentally reshape our city government for the better. The gravity of this task cannot be overstated. Not only will these districts determine the makeup of city council in the November 2024 election, but the final map will be in place until after the 2030 census. It is our hope that these three draft maps will prompt reactions and reflections about how Portlanders want to be represented in City Hall going forward. And we understand that some of what has been presented today might be unfamiliar, it might be technical to some, but our hope is that this presentation gave you a better understanding of our work to date. And before we begin public testimony today, I want to share some of the ways that folks in the community can share feedback or get questions answered by the commission. So community members can submit public comment through Saturday, July 22nd. You can submit comments through our online comment form. You can send an email to districtcommission@portlandoregon.gov. You can give a phone call to 311—we are accepting feedback in any language. Or you can also snail-mail a letter to the Office of Management and Finance. If after today you have any additional comments, or you want to invite your family or friends to share comments, those are some of the ways that folks can get engaged. And with that, this concludes our presentation, and I will now hand it over to our moderator to begin public testimony.
Thank you, Commissioners. Really helpful, informative information, as always. Before we begin public testimony, I want to make sure everyone knows—you do—I see most of you have reports in your hands, so that’s hopefully what you’ve been referring to—I know it’s really hard to see the screen. We’re going to move into public testimony right now, and we only have two people sign up, so I’m hoping some of you have felt inspired by what you have heard and are willing to go to that table and sign up, so we have more people here to provide public comment to the commissioners who are ready to hear it. So it’s not too late to sign up. Please do so. To ensure this is a welcoming space, whether or not you’re going to testify, we’d appreciate it if you would all agree to some rules of conduct. So disruptive conduct, such as interrupting anybody, shouting out from your seats, not ending your testimony during the allocated time, or using foul language will not be allowed. So if you—if you—if there are any disruptions, a warning will be given, and any further warnings may result in you being asked to leave the meeting, which would not be a great result. So thank you for agreeing to follow these rules and make sure everyone feels welcome and has the opportunity to be heard. So I’m going to call people who have signed up to testify two at a time. If your name is first, that means it’s your turn to walk up to the microphone. If your name is second, that means please get ready because you’re coming up next. You will have three minutes to speak, and I’ll be keeping track on my phone. You’ll hear a pleasant chime ring when it’s time for you to conclude your testimony. When you’re speaking, we ask that you please state your name, give us your ZIP code or your neighborhood if you prefer, which map you are testifying on, and if you are testifying on behalf of an organization. And finally, we’d appreciate it if you would speak slowly for our interpreters. Okay, let’s begin. There are two people on our list. Hopefully, one person knows they’re already—oh, could we get—thank you, Andre. So I’m calling Patty Nelson and Jane Monson.
Good evening—or good afternoon. I’m Patty Nelson. I’m here on behalf of Belmont-Wilshire Neighborhood Association, and I first—I just want to tell you—I sat in and watched your deliberation on determining these boundaries, and wow, lots of great dialogue, lots of conversation, really appreciate all the time you’re putting in. When I saw the list of meeting schedule, you guys are working out, and it’s volunteer, too, right? So thank you. So I first want to caveat—we voted on Monday, looked at the maps, and in my rush to try to put them together, I’m realizing that I had Cedar in there twice and mislabeled it as Maple, so I’m caveating, and I’ve been trying to get hold of my board. So I’m going to today testify on what we voted on, give you the rationale why, and then with our written testimony, I may expand. So we voted to support Alder. We’re near the Hollywood Transit Center. Part of the conversation was concerns about using Sandy or streets as a dividing line, feeling like, you know, businesses are on both sides of the street, making sure you have representation along the corridor, not being split down the middle of the street. And in particular, for our area, the Hollywood Transit Center has a lot of issues—the crime, homelessness, and so feeling like having a representative or a district that captured that kind of business area. We really wanted to make sure there was one representative, so that’s why we favored Alder. I now have flagged this for the board—that Maple also does the same for us, so—but that was the rationale and what we were looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Jane Monson?
I live in Eastmoreland, but I’m only speaking for myself. Thank you. I previously testified that the Maple map was my preferred map. However, after listening to testimony from the public hearings that has been posted online, I decided to use the objections that were raised over the Alder and Maple maps to create a new map. I started with the Alder map and did not change anything with the eastern district. My map also keeps most of the northern district of the Alder map intact and uses I-84 and Sandy as a southern border. I used Powell, a major corridor, as the northern border of the district that includes Eastmoreland. I carried this border straight across to the east and included a portion of the west—and included a portion west of the river to create a southern district. The remainder of the map became the central district, which includes portions of the west side of the river like the southern district does. This map keeps Buckman together with the neighborhoods they align with in the east, which was a central talking point for them in the hearings. Although Buckman is still required to share a district with some of the wealthy conservative voters they don’t want to be grouped with on the west side, the district is not dominated by the west side as it is in the Maple map. The southern district in my map keeps Eastmoreland together with the neighborhoods they traditionally align with in southeast, but this district, like the central district, must also share a portion of the west side in order to achieve equal population distribution between the districts. So far, the feedback I have received on this map has been very positive, and it could get support from my neighbors who are not very happy with the Alder map option. The district R map ID is included on the top of the map if you would like to consider it further. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I like what I’m seeing. I have two more names to call. Keep it coming, please. I really appreciate it. We’re going to call Rasan Mohammed—apologies if I misspelled that name or mispronounced— and then Karen Wolfgang.
No, you did very well. So my name is Rasan Mohammed. I’m here on behalf of the historical Albina City and District. You know, in looking at the considerations for the maps, there are a number of things to consider here, and that is the culture and the dynamic of the districts. For example, when you consider the west side, you know, that has our downtown area, that has a lot of our business districts. When you consider the—do the color codings have names? Currently, they don’t have names. Okay, so I’ll identify them by colors if everybody can see that. So, you know, when we consider the Alder map, anytime you’re spreading any part of the west side over into the east side of things, you’re going to have some issues there because if you know anything traditionally about the city and how it was formed, these districts are almost representative of the four cities that combined to make the City of Portland in the first place. And two of these districts did not agree to be part of the City of Portland. You still have that sentiment that sits among those who are the children and descendants of those, and I’m born here, Portland native—I turned 48 this year, so I know something of this history. There were a lot of us in the city, and if you all are not aware, there are a couple city commissioners right now that are trying to change what the voters mandated in dividing this up into the districts the way they currently are. Forgive me, I’m a little nervous on this because I came in here late, and there’s a lot wrapped up in this because we have to consider how expanding government three times to what it currently is is going to be paid for, considering two new taxes that hit everybody’s incomes in the last six months or so. And so when we’re considering the Alder map and moving the west side into that central area, which would be what was historically Albina, you’re going to have a problem there because the interest of the community on the west side is going to be highly different from the interests of the yellow community and as well as all the way out here on the east. East Side of things. When we take into consideration what has taken place and how this city has changed in just the last 10 years or so, when you have a city that is struggling with drug use and what Multnomah County is doing to deal with that, when you have a city where we've increased houselessness and homelessness and drug use as we have and we've watched the city get ran down, but yet the property values are going up, when we see the vacation of commercial businesses down in the West Side and we see all of the housing units that are being built up all around us against some of the homeowners and the traditional families who want to build single family homes, not, not housing, but homes, we have to really ask ourselves like, could we be rushing what we're doing in dividing up the city the way we are and trying to get 12 commissioners to work to unify this community in this way, when we're just talking about next year that we're going to be trying to put and fill these 12 seats? And I just, you know, I'm, I'm a little all over the place with this, but I would like to hear more discussion about how you plan to deal with that in, in this mapping, because we have
Thank you.
Four totally different mind states that are in these districts and with how the commissioners have struggled to come to any type of unity currently, how are we going to divide this up and have any unity going forward?
Thank you very much. The names are still trickling in, so next is Karen Wolfgang, followed by Linda Nedekoven.
Hi commissioners, my name is Karen Wolfgang, I use she/her pronouns. I am in 97236, I'm the Centennial Neighborhood Emergency Team Team Leader, participate in the community association here, and am a founding member of Thrive East PDX, the East Portland Resilience Coalition is now using that, because we have heard from a lot of neighbors that out here, we don't just want to be resilience, resilient, we want to thrive. So I think, I didn't have a plan for, for testifying today, but I am really glad to see that East Portland is one thing across all of the maps. I think we do have similar interests out here and similar, you know, issues in the 13 East Portland neighborhoods. It's going to be interesting for, for me and I think for us, especially at the Thrive East PDX level, to consider, you know, the airport area being part of East Portland and all the way to 82nd in some areas, but we're going to do it because I think it makes a lot of sense. East Portland is not only, as we all know, historically underrepresented politically, we've had a total of two city council people coming from East Portland neighborhoods. Now we're about to have three at once, which is, you know, unprecedented, to say the least. So I'm glad to see that that's, you know, the case, we don't have to have a favorite map because we just want to have one of the maps that, that shows us as one political entity essentially. I think it's going to be challenging to, to sort of raise up leadership in, in ways that, like the previous speaker said, increase unity in the city and don't sort of further splinterize at this time where we really need to be working together. I'm concerned with climate migration and more people, you know, coming here and not necessarily having a really good community plan for integrating all the, the folks who have been displaced from elsewhere, you know, who are struggling currently and are just going to continue to struggle more if we don't provide a variety of housing options, a variety of sort of community services and a variety of amenities, not just the, you know, not just the housing, but like what do we do out here? East Portland is, you know, we have a lot of neighborhoods where people go elsewhere to work, you know, to play, to do whatever it is we do, but what is it that's going to help us come together as communities and Centennial, 25,000 people, no coffee shop? We're in Portland, like that's crazy, right? So, thank you. So yeah, I, I appreciate all the work you've all done, I'm happy to have this opportunity to speak, and yeah, I would really love to hear from some of the other folks who are hopefully from East Portland as well and can speak to that, or whatever your perspective is might be different than mine. So, thank you again and have a great rest of the day.
Thank you Karen, I think we agree, we would love to hear from more of you. I have one more name on this list and then I'm going to start getting annoying and asking for folks to testify. So the next, or and last on our list at the moment is Linda Nedekoven.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. I tried to write this out so I could keep it to three minutes and not wander off and try to tell you all the things I want to talk to you about, but I will put those in writing so you can peruse them at a later time. I know this is a really difficult assignment and I also have some sense of how hard you have been working on it, but I still don't understand why none of the three maps cut up other parts of the city that also have common history, culture, whatever, and focus the carving on inner Southeast where I happen to live. I've been living in Portland for the last 25 years in the Hosford-Abernathy neighborhood and during that time have served as a board member or officer in my neighborhood association and then also in the Southeast Uplift Coalition. So I've really been spending a lot of time trying to get people to come together to solve problems and take advantage of new opportunities, et cetera. The bottom line for me is simply this, South, the inner Southeast in particular is being forced to play a pivotal role in, in our city's future. There's a lot of focus, attention, pressure on that part of the city to change, change quickly, and some of us, I, I know that some people already view it, our area as sort of chopped up, you know, we've got barriers, boundaries and bridges, real rich mix of commercial, a lot of industrial, residential, and are home to many nonprofits, all with their own needs and wants that we want to somehow keep in the conversation. We have freeways and busy arterials along with unimproved streets, I was late today because I got stuck behind the freight train again, and we are working hard to try to come up with responses to that challenge as well. The new alignments, to me the most important thing, and I think the previous speaker was speaking to this also, have to help areas be able to work together even more effectively to, to make it easier, to build on existing systems while deepening, expanding them, creating new opportunities for people that haven't been at the table before to get there. And geography, proximity, those kinds of things, ease of transportation, all play a role in how easy it is to bring people together. So it's, you know, our concern is that residents and business owners and community organizations all have to have a meaningful voice in the changes to come and in our case, not be lost amidst the focus on downtown and the much bigger players who sometimes seem to have kind of an overly large voice in decision-making. What I'm afraid of is that the existing connections, the human infrastructure, that some of you are probably well aware of, you some perhaps not so much, that are already in place, some of it dating back to the, is that my three minutes? Oh, proposed Mount Hood Freeway, are likely to be damaged if you split us along 12th or you lump tenants from Buckman and Kearns and put them with people downtown with whom they have little in common. So, very much, I don't have an alternative proposition and I'm sorry for that, but the maps as you have them do damage to inner Southeast, I believe, and I hope there's a better option. Thank you very much.
Thank you Linda. There are more names on the list, I am happy to report. So the next two people to testify are Stephanie Wyndham, followed by Kevin Moore.
Stephanie Wyndham, 97202, so I'm in the Reed neighborhood. What concerns me about all of the maps, now Alder and Cedar, is that you are taking what is considered a powerhouse community, which is Reed College, East Moreland, Sellwood, and putting that over with the West Side. Reed, when I worked with the school district, Reed was always known to have the highest percentage of lawyers and college educated, and I'm not sure why they are the ones that were chosen to go over to the East Side, we don't want it, just saying. And I also wanted to know, what did the school district have to say about the different maps, if anyone has any feedback on that?
Thank you Stephanie. Kevin Moore, followed by Brian Jensfeld.
Hi, I'm Kevin Moore, I'm just representing myself. I've lived on the East Side for most of my life, and I just want to echo something that Israel, I'm going to butcher his name.
Oh, Rasan.
Rasan, sorry. He alluded to some of the things that I, when looking at this, that we had some concerns about and it's, I lived out here in the Hazelwood area, and, and looking at this, I have to agree that there's been, I don't see a lot of differences between what the old maps, how they were divided up and how they are now. The East County here where I lived was always, I'm talking back in the 50s when I was a kid, was blue collar, low wage, middle class to working class, and out today, and less educated, generally speaking. I don't find that demographic or socio-demographic changed a lot, except it's much more diverse and, but it's, it's still to me, doesn't, it represents, has an over-representation of folks that are, are, are not, certainly not Reed, certainly not the West Side, people out here, seniors, retirees, whatever. I'm, I'm not sure what your, we're supposed to, how this is going to come out any different. I understand there's going to be more representation here for our district, that's a, that's a thumbs up, but I'm, I'm not sure how that's going to change any of the competing needs. You, you put all the school districts together, and I don't know this for sure, but those districts are not representing of the, the most wealthiest schools, they're not the highest curriculum, I know that David Douglas is a program that is, I went to David Douglas or the district, I know teachers who are, have students of 35, diversity of eight different dialects and whatever, I'm not sure, and, and so that, there's a turnover because it's so difficult out here. I'm not sure what this, this whole change has done to, to make it easier or different for us and, and how the representatives are going to represent us when I think they're up against frankly money that isn't represented out here. Thank you.
Thank you Kevin. Brian Jensfeld, followed by Andre Middleton.
Hi, I'm Brian Jensfeld, I live in the Lentz neighborhood, I'm a PCP of the Malt Dems, the ADL for House District 46 and the leader of the Election Integrity and Governance Study Group for the party in our county. I, I've been here before, I think two sessions ago. My major point of interest is I believe that although most would say Portland is defined by one river, I would say it's actually defined by two, yes, you have the Willamette splitting east and west, but you also have the Columbia which divides Oregon from Washington and you have, if anyone's been stuck trying to go into Washington or come back from Washington during rush hour, those two bridges are kind of important. So with, at some point this month, I submitted a map that I titled something like North Gets Its Own. One reason I was late today is I couldn't seem to find it, I, I saw it before on the website, I don't know if those proposed maps have been taken down since we're so late in the process at this point, maybe I'm wrong. But yeah, so I basically drew a map where that yellow district extends all the way along the river. It looked, as far as the East District is concerned, it looks most like, or West District is concerned, it looks most like Alder, so the little port bottom, little bit is what extends in order to get the population. The other cool thing about my map is all of them have 163,000 individuals and then give or take a couple hundred, which is an improvement on all those other maps. And then it, the divider going that way is neatly on Sandy and I think it, it's like Wiedler to Sandy, and so it's a nice smooth division between the three districts. I think as someone who lives in the far Southeast Side, I don't have as much in common or as concerned as the people who live around the airport, whose home prices are impacted by noise there and the huge deal with having a river along your northern border. And that's mostly it. I, I came late, so the last thing I wanted to mention, if it hasn't already been pointed out, and it is a tangent, but just so everyone knows about what's happening on Tuesday, how there, the four current people in charge of the Portland counselor, council with Dan Ryan and so forth, they're trying to modify this whole getup. They don't want three people per district, they only want one, they want to give the mayor additional veto power and they're trying to override what almost 60% of voters voted for, so please contact people, we can't let this sort of authoritarian thing happen.
Thank you Brian. Andre Middleton, followed by Larry Jacobson.
Hi, my name is Andre Middleton, I live in Cully, 97218. I had a question about the maps in the context of, is it true that even though these maps are still being worked on now, will they be redrawn or reassessed ever, or are they like locked in? And with, if they are redrawn and reassessed in the future, will that undermine or uplift the, I guess intended growth of political power of the groups of people in those particular districts? So if a district changes, say 10 years from now, what happens to the people that might be pushed out or brought in to that map? And that was my question, thank you.
Thank you Andre, we've noted your question. Larry Jacobson, followed by JR Lilly.
Hi, I'm Larry Jacobson and he/him from East Moreland and delighted to be here. This is three meetings in a row, which is a lot of fun. East Moreland, that's Southeast Portland, but the meetings I've gone to have been two in North Portland and now here in the East, and I think what I'm really enjoying getting to see people in other parts of the city and that, that's really nice and seeing how we, you know, can work together. One of the things, I'm, this is asking the commissioners, Jane Monson who has that other map, she gave you each a copy, she had one more, she said I could have it, but what I'm wondering is if I could, if it'd be okay with you all if I passed it around the room for people to look at, or if, if that's, if anybody wants to look at it, but you can think about it or say no or?
Oh, are you asking me a question?
Yeah, all of, yeah, that's a question. I don't, it's your meeting, so I shouldn't be doing something without.
Commissioner, I see thumbs up from the commissioners.
Okay, I think it's interesting to look at, why don't I just hand it right here? And what I, because, and so as I said yesterday, the one time I did speak, what I saw was that it seemed like a big goal is to have the East Side intact and the North Side largely intact, and that seems like what I'm hearing from the people who spoke, that's generally been pleasing. And, and so the tensions came is to how to, you know, who has to hop to the other side of the Willamette River? And with the Alder map taking a more northern part of the East Side and the Maple map, excuse me, the other way around, you know, but in other words, one's taking the Southern area, East Moreland, West Moreland, Sellwood, and, and other words, one's taking the southern area, Eastmoreland, Westmoreland, Sellwood. And then I heard somebody, I can't remember if it was Park Rose or Park City, sort of on the eastern end of Sandy, I'm not sure of the areas, but some chopping up of things that took away, you know, cut into the natural alliances. Thank you. And I saw this kind of tension, and with a map like this, that really has, you know, north, and then east, then the southern and central ones, it keeps that central city intact, and it shares the, you know, the West Side. And it just seems like maybe this is a way to look at it. I haven't looked on the site to see how many other maps resemble this, but I think it deserves a good look, and I'd be interested in talking, as people look at it, talking to them after this is over, and see what they think. Anyway, I sure appreciate the job you're doing. I think that nothing's going to be perfect, but we're, you know, the city's trying to go forward, and with your efforts. Thank you.
Perfectly timed, Larry. Last on our list is JR Lilly.
For those who don't speak Navajo, my name is JR Lilly, part of the Redahtan Water People, born from the Cliff Dolly People. I wear a number of hats in the community, identifies he/him/his. Some of those hats include the East Portland Action Plan, member there, a board member for Historic Park Rose, and Thrive East PDX, as well as some other fun organizations. I just want to echo a lot of the thoughts that have been said about East Portland, and where the boundaries are drawn right now. I want to thank the commission for making that possible, because the boundaries that are known by the East Portland EPCO, East Portland Community Organization District Area, we've been working together for a long time. We kind of were annexed all at the same times. We've been facing and advocating for different infrastructure resources for a long time. And so, because of that, we have already existing plans. We have the E-PAP Plan, we have East Portland in Motion, there's a lot of different research, budget mapping, so all of that kind of ties us together, and we're able to now activate on them. I think the ability to have three seats on city council adds another layer of accountability, because right now, they have plans, but do they ever get enacted? And when, let's say if a baseball stadium gets built in the Lloyd Center, a lot of the infrastructure dollars are going to go around that project and not going to be left for any projects out here in the East Portland Motion Plan. So, we need somebody on city council to advocate for us, to be fighting for us, and to represent, and be one of us that goes down there in City Hall and fights for us. So, just want to echo that. We've been fighting for a long time, and keeping the East Portland boundary as it is, I think is very commendable. Just want to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, JR. Well, I want to commend this audience so far for stepping up and signing up. We had a much better turnout than we were starting with. It's not going to save you from me being annoying at this moment, and compelling the rest of you who have not yet testified, to please consider this moment to be an opportunity to have your voice heard. So I'm looking into the audience, at those who have not yet testified. Is there anybody here who would like to give three minutes of your thoughts to the commission? Yes, please. Thank you. Step up to the mic. As a reminder, please give us your name, your zip code, or your neighborhood, and if you were part of an organization, or speaking on behalf of one. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is Ellie, she/her/or they. So we're currently in the Brooklyn neighborhood, and we're about to move back into the Abernathy neighborhood. And I just want to echo sort of what many people here are saying. And I am, from what I see, I am partial to the Maple map, because of its focus on renters. I think any of the problems that people see in Portland will not be solved until renters have an appropriate voice. And it has never happened in the history of Portland, and I'm hoping that we get to that. And with having 12 on the commission, I have hope that we can finally have a council, a commission, that really looks out for renters, that looks out for low-income workers. And so, whatever map is chosen, I say this tongue-in-cheek, but it's almost like we should ask our current commission what they like, and do the opposite. So, yeah, the focus on renters, I think, will help us a lot. We need a strong renters' voice. And so, yeah, that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Do I see someone else? Yes, please. Step up to the mic. You have three minutes.
Greetings. My name is Chris. I live in the Highwood District or neighborhood. I'm representing myself. I have a preference for the Alder map, although maybe with some features of the Cedar or Maple map. And I agree that we might want to separate, put a fifth district in. There'll be, could be more districts, but at least one would be too small. Also, do they supersede the southeast, southwest, with the new south, northwest, north, and northeast? I mean, will they supersede the five or six division, or like southeast, southwest, northwest, north, and northeast, and along with the new south district?
Chris, we'll note your question, and then if we have time at the end, the commissioners will be able to answer.
And there's a, there's a slight difference in the green section. That would be too small for, if they think too small for a district. I have a preference for Alder, because that at least keeps the neighborhood boundaries intact, though I might, I might agree with the earlier speaker, that the south might be a fifth district. And there's, and there's a, maybe, maybe the, that East Side, maybe there'd be, should be at least five or six districts, including the east, the lower, blue, and south, and the Buck, because I live in the so-called Yellow District, it's actually a peach color, and, well, the advantage of Alder that preserves the, but if you have a picture of the Cedar District, that preserves the transit corridors, and the Maple keep pulling unified, but Alder will keep the neighborhoods intact, at least the boundaries. Okay, well, okay, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well-timed, appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to provide testimony? Have you already testified?
I'm going to make a quick declaration. Can I testify myself?
If you would like to provide additional comment, you can do so through the comment form, or online. Right now, it's for anyone who has not yet spoken. Yes, please.
My name is Kathy Heidi. I'm from the Wilkes District. And first of all, I'd like to thank this commission. When I got the flyer on it, I had no idea what this was all about. And I want to commend you for how you've worked together in unity, to try to meet the criteria, to stay focused. Have served in different capacities before, and you can put a lot of work into it. My biggest concern is what I just heard shared, that we've got other factors that want to just kind of nullify what the voters have voted for. And you only have jurisdiction for this, but I'm very concerned, I really appreciated what Mr. Muhammad and some others shared about wanting to create unity and work together as a city. And I'm, I had no opinion coming in. I wanted to hear what people said. It seems that possibly, if you could keep neighborhood groups intact, as compared to chopping it by Sandy Boulevard, or whatever, that seems like the people's heart is more important, especially in this volatile climate, that we need to let people know they're respected, especially if they're paying the bill, that we need to be heard. And when we say it, we need, I had, I don't even know if I voted for this issue or not, because I don't know what it means, how it's going to be interpreted, and what's going to happen with it. So, that's a real concern I have, is that we will be honored by whoever's in government, that it's not just to save us, that they really will listen and let us try this. And I appreciate what you've, the work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I'm going to keep asking, because people keep biting. Is there anyone in the audience who has not yet testified, who would like to have three minutes to share your thoughts? There's an awkward pause trick, that I was told, which is that you have to count to seven in your head, just to let it linger a little bit. So I'm counting to seven. Anybody else? I should probably tell you that once I close public testimony, we cannot reopen it. So you will not have another opportunity to give three minutes of testimony today. There are plenty of other ways in which you can provide your comment, however. Oh, I see another taker. Yes, please step up to the mic.
My name is Sam. I use they/them pronouns. I'm from the Brooklyn neighborhood. I'm not speaking on the behalf of the Brooklyn neighborhood, but I just want to say that, given our history with cultures, and just all that terrible history, I think ultimately what the choice should come down to between the three maps should be based on what would not split up communities the least. I think that should be prioritized, because in the past, we haven't prioritized that. So I just, I think that that should be a big point of consideration, is which of these three maps, like I already know a lot of thought has gone into, like, making sure communities aren't split up, but given that there, it will be some splitting up between the, like, no matter which map you take, I think it should be based on these communities that have not been well represented, that have faced terrible things in history. Like, I think those things should be prioritized when we look at the three maps.
Thank you very much. Okay, last call, everybody, for testimony, for anyone who has not yet spoken. Once I close public testimony, we'll move into questions that we heard during testimony. And if there's still time, we could take additional questions from the audience. Oh. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keith. I am also in the Brooklyn neighborhood. One of the things I haven't seen, or really seen talked about, is because the West Side doesn't have enough population to make its own district, each of the three maps, by default, has to take something off of the East Side of the river. One of the factors here, and this is the one that I haven't seen talked about, is looking at what percentage of the population comes from the East Side. Because if you have too small of a portion of population coming from the East Side, they're never going to be able to sway the vote about what comes off of the West Side. So whichever neighborhoods got split off into the East Side are effectively not going to be accurately represented by that. So, whichever of those maps ends up actually being able to provide a larger percentage of people added to the West Side, and I know the numbers are, were all kind of close, but I just, I think you run the risk of diluting the vote from those central southeast neighborhoods too much, depending on which map is selected.
Thank you very much. I saw, yes, please. Well, there's two people, so I'm going to take the person in the back, and then you'll be next.
Darrell, 97202. Just, I know there's a lot more data from the census available than race. Race is a very important metric to slice these things up on. I'm just wondering if, when you move forward, if some of the reports that come out, and some of the options we're given, have some of the other metrics in terms of income, rental proportion, transportation choices, just, there's a lot of other data available besides race, and it's useful to give us some reports on how these things would shake up along those axes. So, thanks.
Thank you. Yes, please.
I'm Chris Lee. I'm from the, I don't know what neighborhood it is, Hazelwood, maybe? 97220. But I just wanted to say, there's been so much worry for the folks in southeast getting pulled apart. Why, why do they have to be three representatives from each district? What if the West Side just had two, and southeast had four? I mean, then they could maintain, you know, their connections. I mean, what is the importance of splitting them off? I don't, I don't really see that. You know, people have spoken how, how they feel. Anyway, that's just an idea.
Thank you very much. Any other ideas? For anyone who has not yet spoken?
I think I should be able to speak for myself, as a resident. I spoke for the nation as a resident.
Commissioners, I'm looking to you to make a call on this.
Ma'am, please, please do speak. I think what the moderator was attempting to do was allow anyone who has not spoken yet be able to speak, but please.
I agree. And that's why I do.
Got you.
Thank you for letting me testify. So Patty Nelson. I've lived here my entire life, so that's one thing I want to put, I lived in Park Rose and grew up there. I live in 97213 right now. Very familiar with East Side, really believe that we need to have representation out here. Something that I'm not clear on, I think I hear a theme here, is, is what is, what are the districts being centered around? And so when you struggle with this East Side concept, how do you make up the population? What strikes me is that part of North Portland has an industrial area, which has common interests, common concerns to the West Side industrial. And I don't know if there's any thought in terms of the districts being around kind of policies, or issues, that are going to have to be tackled by the city commissioners, but I think that would be one of them. One of the things we've been talking about, and we've been working with Linton, right, are air quality concerns. So the airport has been pulled into East County, but when you think about air quality, it's running all along near the airport. Same thing with industrial concerns. So maybe that's a way of rethinking the districts, and making up the, the population, of trying to think about how you can tackle the policy issues, and kind of grouping the districts around that. So, food for thought. And I always think I-84 is kind of a divider. You know, I grew up here in northeast, identify kind of northeast, still there. And so I-84 always seems to be kind of that divider, and considering that as a line to divide the districts. Thank you.
I think it might be that time for us to close public testimony. Everyone agrees. So thank you, everyone, for your participation. We actually achieved a pretty great percentage of participants today, so really appreciate you stepping up to provide your thoughts. So commissioners, it is that time where we kind of start talking about questions that came up during testimony, and passing the mic around for folks who may want to answer. So I'm looking at my list here. And I'd say, let's start with a question we heard fairly early on, from Hassan, around, is this process too rushed? early on from Rasan around, is this process too rushed with too much to consider? Is it reinforcing division of the city instead of unifying the city? Is there anyone who would like to speak to that?
I can try. So I think, you know, the central job and challenge of this moment is, you know, working, this commission working to fulfill the mandate given to it by voters on the timeline prescribed by the charter amendments that were approved last November. So you saw on our timeline, you know, we applied and were appointed in January with, you know, the mandate to deliver a map no later than September 1st, and to do the level of community engagement at the same time that we are, you know, engaging community and developing these maps is, is extremely difficult. So I, I would say we are moving on a very fast timeline, and we are doing our best to do equitable engagement while also fulfilling the job that Portland gave to us. And on the subject of unity, I totally hear that comment, and it's something that I've heard at several of these hearings around the language of dividing Portland and, and things like that. I will say one of the perspectives that I've tried to elevate on this commission is really flipping that districting question and asking not how we divide Portland into four districts, but what would it look like to put four districts together for one Portland, one city council? So that is a perspective that we've kind of grappled with, and I think each of these draft maps offer different ways to answer that question, but it is an important thing, especially as we think about how these maps are going to welcome more voices to City Hall. Whatever we can do to encourage unity, I think is valuable, so I appreciate the, the comment and, yeah, acknowledge the challenge before us in, in meeting this timeline. It's, it's extremely difficult.
Commissioner Judd, and then Valdini.
I think that's a, your, your question is spot on. There's no right or wrong answer to it. You're talking about 600,000 plus people. How many of them are ready? So it's not, I don't think it's a question for the, the commission. I think in a lot of ways, the residents of Portland voted to say, this change needs to take place. So then the big question becomes, how? How does it implement it? What's the best way to effectuate the spirit of the voter requirements? That's what, not just these, these commissioners that were sitting here, but that's the role of the entire populace of Portland. That's why we gather as a collective here to take in that feedback, to understand those concerns, and I think, you know, part of the point that Commissioner Lorente is raising is, for this first time, Portlanders are having a discussion of who do they best align with in terms of communities and how do they, how best, does representation, what does representation and equity look like? It's a difficult question. It's a question that is going to, it's ongoing question as populations shift, and I know there's, there's a question, I'm damn sure we'll get to it, in terms of like, what does the future look like and, and the future change and, and how does we prepare for the changes in 2030? We're taking this incremental step. This particular commission is set up just to define the, the voting maps, but what we're here to do is understand what relationships does the city of Portland, does the community members find to be most important? How are they prioritizing, prioritizing them in order to draw something that provides that first step of equalized representation?
Thank you. Commissioner Valdini.
So in my real life, I'm a professor of political science with a focus on electoral system design. So a lot of my participation on this council has been, on this commission, has been thinking about the science of what we're doing, and I wanted to address the unity question and really commend the charter commission that came before us, because the electoral system they designed is one of the most representative and most unifying that you can possibly design. Inherent in the system they designed is an incentive to compromise, and that's something our current system does not have. The new system we are going to have has that incentive, and I could walk you through all of it, but it would take too long. The other scholars that I work with are so impressed that we had just a group of regular people come up with one of the most representative and high-quality electoral systems that they'd ever seen, and it's the reason why I volunteered to help draw these lines, because I was so impressed with the quality and the future of Portland under this electoral system. I did want to address also the recent turn of events with Commissioner Ryan and Commissioner Gonzalez saying they're going to change it, that their proposed changes will change the nature of this system and the outcome dramatically. So I don't want, while it's not my job to tell you what to do, it's my job to tell you, well, at least in my real job, to tell you facts about what will happen. The proposed changes to what the commission is working with would, the outcomes would change dramatically. It would not have this level of representation. It will not incentivize compromise. So if you like what we, what was decided by the voters, then I encourage you to make your voice heard on that, and if you don't like it, then I encourage you to make your voice heard on that as well. Finally, I want to say again confidently from my position as a scholar, whatever lines we draw will be so much better than what we have now. I think we all agree that our city needs help, and I can tell you again, thanks to the excellent work done on designing this electoral system, we are going to find success with this new outcome, no matter how we draw the line. So I really just wanted to add that note of optimism to this. Thank you.
Commissioner Siegel.
One of these days, we will get wireless mics. But I think to answer Rasan's question directly, timing, it's September 1st. That's, that's our mandate. There's not the wiggle room there, so I'm just jumping right to your question. To my esteemed co-commissioners' comment and others that were raised here, whether the city council, the current city council, gets enough votes to change the recommendations of the charter commission is in my viewpoint, and I'd welcome other viewpoints. It's irrelevant to what we do. We've been given a job to identify four districts along the lines of certain criteria that you all, or that the majority of voters approved. We elected not to change those criteria. So we're using those, we have a fixed timeline, and whether it's three council members or two council members, whatever happens, it's irrelevant to the work that we are doing at the moment, because our task is to provide four districts that address certain criteria. Also wanted to thank you for coming out on a lovely day, and without having gone through the numbers, this is exactly the sort of input that we were hoping to receive from so many of you. You know, we're not you. You can tell us better than we can guess what your communities of interest are and who you want to hang with and who you don't want to hang with, but we've had over 200 maps prepared and submitted. It's not too late, and so without having dived into this, I just want to thank you for having taken the time to do this. This is exactly the kind of stuff we want to hear. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, the next question really kind of came up a couple different times and a couple different ways, but the essential question is, why chop up the Southeast side of town? And kind of relatedly, do you have the power to change the number of representatives in those districts to balance what may be perceived as inequitable power? A bit of a doozy. Commissioner Van Sickle-Robins.
So the last part of that question is no. We are doing what the voters tasked us with doing, and that was about 60% of the voters in a 60-plus percent turnout election in November. With respect to going and, and chopping up the East Side, the issue really is the West Side, because its population, not only is it too small to be on its own, and that is by law, we can't, we can't create a district that is that much smaller than the other districts in the city. But the other issue is that the population on the West Side, the folks who've played with the mapping already know this, but the population, 60% of the population is south of downtown. So there's, there's really no way to cut three pieces across the West Side, because the whole upper part of the West Side is almost unpopulated and has communities that, if you want to see orphaned communities, Linton, Forest Heights, they're all in that funny little outside edge of the northern part. They aren't even connected by roads that continuously go through the city of Portland. So that means that you have to use a lot of the lower part of the West Side, and I wanted to just point out that Zone 1 of Multnomah County includes all of the West Side and a band of the East Side, south of I-84, that dissects about five neighborhoods, but that's, that's the way Multnomah Zone 1 Commissioner is drawn. And the East Side of that district has been fairly successful in placing commissioners on the Multnomah County Commission. Deborah Cifuri, Jules Bailey, and others. So that's just one thing, a data point to keep in mind. The other thing is, when you start to then cut the West Side in half, you have to pull lines that dissect, there's just no other way. It dissects the Southeast and it pulls some amount of Southeast Portland into those two districts. So again, I invite you, spend time with the mapping tool, because you learn a lot about the Rubik's Cube that we're all trying to figure out how to do, and as, just personally, I want to say that there is not going to be a perfect outcome. There are going to be people who are unhappy with the outcome, and there's just no way around that.
Commissioner Judd, and then Commissioner Saxena.
This is dovetailing to another question that's going to come up, I'm sure, which is the question around, I think it was Ethan asked this question around, what percent of the East Side would then carry over to the West Side? Are you not able to hear me? Sorry. I'll, I'll repeat it again. Got you. Thank you. What Ethan's question was, what percent of the East Side, if you were to do this partitioning and pull in the east to the west, what percent, what percent would it be? So that, the notion behind that is a notion of weighting, the notion of representation, so that as he articulated, if you're going to jump the river, do you pull in a large enough voting block such that they have influence? And it goes back to Ms. Lee's last point, where she was asking, can you change the number of representatives per district? Well, if you were able to sort of provide enough weighting, and this is, this is, we're taking in his feedback to consider this, if there's enough weighting that you can pull in from the East Side, such that they could be able to support, if there's some level of proportionality there, that they're able to support a district representative, again, that's better than not having someone at this, at this particular point. And it's just, these are just options. Now, I think this also dovetails or goes to this point that Rasan was making, which is about unity. These lines don't create unity. It's the community members' willingness to partner with one another to overcome differences that ultimately will be able to lead towards unity. And so what we're attempting to do is, again, listening and gather as much feedback as we possibly can, consider all the options available to us to create, again, a Portland that is ultimately united across all these districts, but has the representation such that if there's a voice, if there's a need, if there's a priority that needs to be elevated, that there's an infrastructure and mechanism for that elevation to take place.
No, thank you, and I want to sort of echo what my fellow commissioners have said, and also the appreciation for folks who have been trying to play with the maps and make the numbers work, because that is one of our charges. Another charge that we had, and this is specifically to the question of why we looked at Southeast when we were considering how to, you know, how to create districts that had proportional representation. One of the criteria dealt with transportation and transportation corridors, and that we had to consider transportation within a district, and nearly all of our bridges, the majority of our bridges are, are south. They're, you know, there's Burnside, there's Hawthorne, and Markham. I mean, most of our bridges are Burnside, south, and that, that's the connection. That's one of the connections that connects Southeast and, and Southwest. So we had to, you know, we looked at, because we did look at, we did look at north and North Portland, we looked at, you know, as, as Patty was saying, with the, the industrial areas, and it didn't really, it didn't pencil out, the bridges weren't there, there aren't a lot of folks living in those industrial areas, so it didn't really make a difference in terms of population. So again, I, we super appreciate when folks are looking at the mapping tool and trying to figure out, you know, what are some other ways of doing this, because that is super helpful. So thanks, everyone, and thanks for coming out on this beautiful day when there's so many other places and things you could be doing. So appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. The next question is, what have school districts said about the maps? Does anyone want to speak to?
I'm going to just jump in, because the, in the mapping tool, there is, there are a whole lot of data overlays, probably 40 different kinds of overlays that you can lay on the maps. One of them is school enrollment areas for grade school, middle school, and high school. We, I personally have been looking more at high school, just because it doesn't change as often as the lower-grade schools do, and the thing that's challenging about that is that the high school enrollment areas from the I-84 South run from I-84 South. So they're long, narrow strips. So Cleveland runs all the way down, Franklin runs all the way down, McDaniel's runs from actually Cully all the way down into Southeast on the, out, on the East Side. Jefferson and Roosevelt go east to west, and over on the West Side, there's, there's a big mass in the lower Southwest that goes to Ida B. Wells, and then a long, narrow strip from Linton all the way to the end of downtown that goes to Lincoln. So it's not very useful, and it's very hard not to violate those enrollment areas for the high schools, no matter what, I mean, there's just no way to draw a map, I don't think, that would not violate some of those boundaries.
Looking down the table. Next question then is, how does more representation help the competing needs of the city? We need the, we need the scientist, Commissioner Valdini.
Yeah. So represent, I don't want to like launch into my lecture. Representation is fundamental to democracy, but what that means is that when you let different parts of the city with different needs have their voices heard and have someone in power who is directly paying attention to them and is incentivized to pay attention to them because of the way the district lines are drawn, then you get both happier people in the city, you get people who are more willing to participate, you get more cooperation. So representation, higher levels of representation, that is letting people feel like someone's listening to them, like their voices are heard. Again and again, the data are very clear, it's going to increase the likelihood that that democracy survives and thrives. It really does help when people feel like their voices are heard and that they're cared about. So it's our job to try to figure out how to draw these lines so that the most people feel represented and cared about by the new version of the city commission. Did that answer it?
Commissioner Siegel.
I am standing up. From one vertically challenged person to another. Sorry, the cords aren't as long as they could be. I agree with what my fellow commissioner just said, 1,000%. Here's how it works in practice, which is no different than what Here's how it works in practice, which is no different than what you just said. By way of example, I worked for the city of Salem for about 12 years in their Public Works Department as a manager for one of their major divisions. And Salem was divided up into city council wards or districts, and they had geographic representation, and, you know, all over the, all over the city. When it came time to develop a budget, and there were budget hearings, you might expect that when it came to providing additional funding for assets, existing or new ones, that there was a competition amongst city council wards and city council members for a larger slice of the budget pie. We need stormwater systems over here. We need a bridge across this geographic feature over here. We've had potholes in this, in north Portland that will swallow up all of south, I mean, north Salem, that'll swallow up all of south Salem. So, it's, there's all these kinds of issues that are competing for the same budget pie. And during hearings, you have your elected representatives representing their geographic needs as well as the needs of the city as a whole. That's how it works in practice. And so, by having geographic representation, and by having more representation, you're going to have more of an opportunity to get those things that are important to you heard about and supported and developed. And so, Commissioner Valdini was dead on, and this is how it happens in practice.
I'm going to describe the next question because this is what I think what's written on here is trying to get to, which is, after you make your final decision and you've set the map and the boundaries, what happens in the future as populations shift, people move in and out of districts? Are these the maps forever? Are these the districts forever? What happens in the future?
So, the, every 10 years, the decennial census takes place. And so, the next time for these maps to be reviewed for the city of Portland will be in 2030, when that decennial data is released, and when the charter is reviewed at that time. And so, we understand that part of the mission that we are charged with right now is to leave a legacy of popcorn trail, to help that body do a more efficient job of defining those maps at that time. So, as much insight as we can leave about how to do this better by taking these feedback from you, that's one of our efforts as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleishman.
Just wanted to add one other thing to this notion of opportunity and what we were talking about in terms of unity. It is an opportunity, but having more representation is not a guarantee. Community organizations, community members will have to be even more so engaged once these lines are drawn in order to ensure that the opportunity fulfills this commitment to unify, not just to unify, because unify can also be a consolidation of power in traditional ways that might not necessarily be a good thing. So, it means it would, there's a responsibility for each of us to ensure that as we are unifying and consolidating, that it's including those voices that have been traditionally underserved, underrepresented. And that, for the city of Portland, is going to take some intentional effort in order to elevate those voices. So, it's not necessarily that more representation in a, in a population, the way Portland is structured right now is a guarantee for improved representation. It's an opportunity. We all have to make sure that that opportunity exists for all our community members.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleishman.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to reiterate the fundamental understanding that all of this is based on what our city charter says, which is, in essence, the constitution that governs our city, and that's what the voters amended through, through the last electoral process. So, and that was the first time it was amended in this way in more than 100 years. So, assuming it continues, that we continue to have four electoral districts, there will probably be similar meetings after the 2030 census. We'll probably be sitting where you're sitting, and some of you may be sitting here, and we can be having that conversation about how have the realities of the city changed. But some of the fundamentals, such as the constitutional protections that we have in the Voting Rights Act, will still apply. So, we will still have to kind of balance the numbers game, the technical aspects of this, with the political and, and public policy aspects of making sure that everybody feels comfortable that we have drawn a, a map, or we have collectively drawn a map that allows everybody the fullest possible participation. But that's what's going to come after the next census again.
The next question is, will these districts supersede any other boundaries? So, for example, the way we currently understand north, northeast, northwest, south, southeast?
No.
Okay. And south.
Right. There, those are, those are geographic areas and how we define them. We have a city of quadrants that has more than four, which is what makes Portland unique in some ways, but, but that is separate and apart from the electoral map that we are drawing here. So, two separate, two separate processes.
South appears to be divided into two subsections. There are not markers, no explanation given. Or that, or actually two subsections of South Portland.
Thank you, Chris. There's a lot of boundaries in the city. The next question is, I think someone would like a little more explanation about what other data was used to develop these maps outside of race. Commissioner Vance, oh, Commissioner Judd.
Yeah, so, sorry. I think the question, as, sorry, I think we were about to say, like, I think the question was, is there anything other than racial data that was used? And there's a definitive yes. The census data is not just racial. It's renter, housing income, and also, not only did we use the decennial data, we also use supplemental data as well to help us understand, as I said, that render piece, school districts, population count, so on and so forth. So, that was a plethora of data sets that overlay that we're attempting to use.
And if you're interested in seeing those for yourselves, you can, if you go to our website, there's a link to an ArcGIS site where you can actually look at each of these three maps and overlay all of those different census data sets, high school enrollment areas, neighborhood boundaries, Multnomah County Commissioner districts, anything your heart desires, it's there. And actually, speaking of maps, someone, this hadn't been a question, but someone, I think it was Brian, made a comment about drawing the north, or submitting the North Gets Its Own map and then not seeing it later. I believe no maps are ever taken down from District R. Is that correct, Kimmy? I'm seeing a thumbs up from the, from the people who know. We, there is nothing ever taken down from there for transparency and public records. So, Brian, if you, sometimes you have to hit load a couple times to find it in there, but if that's in there, it should still be there. And the helpful thing, if you wanted to submit that map with a public comment and some of your rationale, that's really, really helpful for us, like essentially a digital version of this, what number we should look at in District R, and the hyperlink to it, and then a couple of bullets of the rationale. That's really helpful for us. Thank you.
Commissioner Fleishman, and then Van Sekel-Robins.
This is a double reassurance, Brian. I saw your map just the other day because we had our virtual meeting, and another citizen, Terry Harris, referenced his map. It was called the Cherry Map. I looked it up, and in looking it up, I scrolled, I scrolled and saw that your map was still up there. And, and assurance that in, in that case, and in the case of the other map that was hopefully provided today, we're really hardworking commission, and I can assure you, we'll go back and take a look at those and, and think about that as we continue our deliberations.
And I just wanted to add one thing that we haven't talked about in our presentations, but one of the things we're also tasked with, once we decide on the map, is to number the four districts. And we're going to be numbering those based on voter participation, voter turnout tracking because the charter reform has us having two, the two districts with the lower turnout, they're going to be in the presidential, they'll be voting in the presidential years where turnout is typically higher. And the two districts that have the higher turnout will vote in those off-presidential years where turnout is lower. So, that's another way that the reforms boost participation and representation.
I have one more question. Have districts been developed around policy issues or challenges?
Well, we're listening to you all, and so, as people have talked about policy issues or themes, we've been charting that. I think that one of the things that Commissioner Judd was talking about, and I think there were some comments and questions about it, is alliances and cooperation that's going to need to happen across districts and among, among these 12 councilors, because, as was mentioned, the issues for the airport, for instance, they stretch all the way from out in this neck of the woods all the way around to Rivergate out on the far west, and those are impossible to connect in a single district. But that doesn't mean that there's not going to be huge opportunities for renters in different districts, or people who have environmental justice, or industrial pollution issues, or people who have parks issues, or people who have sidewalk or lack of sidewalk issues to collaborate. And, because you're going to need seven votes on the council, the new council, to pass things, so there's going to have to be collaboration.
All right, Commissioners, I think this is probably a good time to start wrapping up the session and moving into closing remarks. So, I want to offer an opportunity for any Commissioners to offer their reflections, their kudos, anything you want to say.
I think there was somebody who possibly had a question to add from.
I'm sorry.
Did you have a, a woman who came from Centennial, did you have another question to add? You had your hand up at one point, but if you, it sounds like now.
I guess the question was about, I heard about the land. We heard about the school districts input in terms of PPS, but not the, you know, our school districts, so Centennial, Park, Rose, David, Douglas, and Reynolds. Was there any input from those districts to that?
There was some feedback in an effort to, what we did was, we, the east Portland district combines all the east Portland school districts into one district. So, there was, there was feedback that, that those districts wanted to, to remain whole because I think nearly, or maybe all of them have one high school, and so they wanted to have their entire district together. And so, we made an effort to keep them all together in one district. So, that's.
How about now? Do we feel good about moving? Commissioner Siegel?
Thanks. And I'll keep it brief. Again, thanks for coming out on a gorgeous day. And I think it's important to note, and I've said this in other hearings, so forgive me, those have heard this four or five times, but these, these three maps are conceptual maps. They were developed around themes, they were developed around numbers, concepts, and also based upon input that we received during informational meetings, our listening session, et cetera. These, so each of these maps represented some commonalities and some differences that we heard, and we wanted to have these, tease out some comments and some questions, and they certainly have. You've let us know what you like, what you don't like, why you do or don't like them, and that's critical. Again, submitting your own map, that's golden as far as really helping to convey opinions. So, what we're going to do is, after these hearings, we'll convene as a commission, we'll take the information that's been provided, both electronically and in person, and we'll look to coalesce things as best we can and work hard to come up with that one map. And you said, very well, it's very true, we won't satisfy everyone, it won't be the perfect map, but we're going to get it done as well as we can in this first time of districting in Portland's history. So, there still is that public comment period open, as our moderator was telling us before. So, it's not too late. Get your maps drawn, get your, keep those cards and letters coming, and help us help you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. And I know we heard from quite a number of folks today, which was great to hear, but if you're someone in the audience who either had an additional comment that came up, or didn't speak at the mic yourself, we also have some posters up here on the wall with some postits where you can share small pieces of feedback, like looking at the maps, what do you like, what do you wish were different, and what new ideas do you have that we should consider? We heard some great ideas here this, this afternoon. And there's also an opportunity to take a little sticky, and if it were up to you, would you vote for none of these maps, or Alder, or Cedar, or Maple? Just another way to share feedback if standing at the mic wasn't your jam today. But thank you all so much for being out here today and to this fabulous venue for, for being so welcoming to us this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to, if you don't mind, add another round of thank you's before officially adjourning this meeting. So, I want to thank our interpreters. They have been at all nine meetings, at all of our public meetings, and they provide an invaluable service to make sure accessibility, everybody has the opportunity to access these meetings. I also want to thank our technical partners, Friends of Noise, who have helped keep the sound flowing for all of these meetings. They've been remarkable, showing up at all of these in-person hearings. So, thank you so much, Friends of Noise. I obviously want to thank the staff who have all these materials around all over the city. It's been a pleasure and an honor to be putting these meetings on for all of you. I want to thank, obviously, our Commissioners and everyone who came here today, and finally, to Youth PDx for their really warm welcome in this wonderful community space. Thank you so much for welcoming us in and, and making room for all of us. So, with that, I'm going to officially adjourn this meeting. Have a wonderful afternoon, everybody.